Good evening, everyone. I call to order the November 17 meeting of the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Sharp. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Would everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while I have you standing, anyone and everyone who's going to testify tonight needs to be sworn in. So if you'd raise your right hand and swear that all and any testimony that you give tonight will be the whole truth, so help you God. Thank you. A reminder also to all of us to silence our electronic devices. Another reminder that anyone who testifies must also sign in with their name and address. We also have a sign-in clipboard in the hallway. First item is the approval of minutes of the September 8 meeting. We did a special joint meeting with the village board. We did not have these minutes ready yet at the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved?
Second.
Second, Scales.
Is there any discussion on those minutes? And may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
I abstain. I was not there. I abstain, I wasn't there.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Excuse me, I'm abstaining also, I was not there.
Clear, Wally?
I'll point out that you can technically, if you want to, vote to approve minutes even though you're not there.
Oh!
As long as you read them and they make sense to you, you're legally allowed to vote for them, but you're also allowed to abstain. If you abstain, your votes counted with the majority.
Oh, thank you.
I'd point out, it was really a good meeting, getting to interface with village board members, and we hit a number of different subjects. Seriously, if you haven't gone through those minutes, please do.
I did, yeah, I did.
Next item is the approval of minutes of our last meeting on October 13th, our regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Clemmons?
I'll second. Lavoy?
Lavoy. You got that, Wally?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren? Yes. Commissioner Sharp? And Chairman Carmichael?
Next item is what we call an open forum. This is the opportunity for anyone from the village present who would like to come to the podium and address any issue or subject that is not on tonight's agenda. And seeing no one, we'll proceed to the last item before new business, and that's just a review of our public hearing procedures. Our procedure is that the petitioner will come forward to the podium and present his or her petition. And next would be comments from staff. This evening, we have the very able assistant, the economic development director and acting village planner, Mr. Hennert Fein, in that role. And then any public comments, anyone from the public who wants to come and make comments or questions of the petitioner. And finally, the commissioners for their comments, discussion, and finally a vote. Reminder that the votes of this commission are recommending only, we're a recommending body, our recommendation goes forward to the village board, and they make the final Under new business, I would call first Planning and Zoning Item 128-2021, a request from Robert Baruchy regarding the property located at 319 North Lincoln Street in Westmont for the following. A zoning code variance request to allow a driveway to encroach into the required side yard setback. Mr. Baruchy?
I'm Robert Baruchy, and this is my wife, Brian. We have five kids, and we've lived at this house since 2017. And we knew we had to put in a driveway, and it all came to head because my daughter just got her license on Saturday. And our neighbor at 218 North Lincoln Street was kind enough, Richard, to let my daughter park there. We were originally going to get the driveway put in in April when we found out about the rule we had to have three feet between the two driveways. Now, we're on a narrow area there, and if we were to follow this and have the three feet between my neighbor's driveway and ours, the driveway would be right up against our house, and the cars would be extremely close to the house. It just doesn't really work. So for this to work, we got permission from our neighbor that it would be okay to tie into his driveway, and it would work great for our family. We're the only house on the block that doesn't have a driveway, and we really need it, and I think that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you. Staff, comments, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an area town that has very narrow lots. For the most part, a lot of the lots that were created up here are 50 feet wide, which is substandard to our current zoning code, which would require 60 feet. As the applicant indicated, this is a unique home in that it doesn't have a driveway. So in its whole existence there, there's never been a driveway. There is a small parking pad that's in front of the house, that's a little bit to the north. That's actually technically in the right-of-way, so it's in the village's area, and the village has no objection to that being there, it's been there for quite some time. The applicant did apply for a permit to get a driveway, at which time he was informed that there needed to be a three-foot separation distance to the property line specifically to the south. Now, the way the driveway codes read, they say any driveway needs to be a minimum of nine feet wide, and that's basically so that you can pull your car on it and get out of your car door without stepping into the mud. And once it's nine feet wide, you can go wider, but in this case, the applicant doesn't have a lot of space, especially to get by the house. So the house almost sits right in the middle of the property. To the north, they only have seven feet; to the south, they have about 13. So the most logical place to put it is on the south side of the house, there's already an AC unit that's in the way, and that is the way to get to the backyard at this point. Now, we always look to the neighborhood to see if this is unique, and as the applicant had provided in his application materials, there are several properties in this area that have narrow lots where they have basically built driveways, probably predating our requirement for three feet away from each other, that are what we would consider shared driveways, or really what it is, is the property line splits the driveway in half. So the request tonight is not unusual for the area, and the lot is fairly unique because of the conditions that it has there. Staff has no objection to the request, and the neighbor to the south has provided us with a letter of support. I just remind everyone that that owner could change over time, so this is something that will run with the property, and at this point in time, we have a neighbor that has no objection to it. And as always, I can answer any questions. I'll try to be brief tonight, just because we have so much on the agenda, so.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to address this issue? Seeing no one, we'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to start?
Yeah, I have no problem with this because of all the reasonings I've already stated, and the driveway now will go right next to the house, and you don't want cars driven, regardless of the age of the driver, that close to the house.
Yes.
Yes.
And so I support your request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
Likewise, I would support it. I am familiar with that situation. I had a relative in La Grange Park had the same problem, so trying to work around with the driveways and the air conditioning units and stuff like that, I completely understand that. Borrowing the other, you know, with that, I realize over time it can change with other owners, but I am in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
I have no questions. I'm good.
Commissioner Scales?
I'm good. No comments.
Seems very reasonable to me as well. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
In that case, the chair would accept a motion to recommend the approval of the village board of trustees under PCC 128-2021, this request from Mr. Baruchy regarding the property at 319 North Lincoln Street for the following. A zoning code variance request to allow a driveway to encroach into the required side yard setback.
Still moved? Lavoy?
Second.
Second, Clemmons.
Second, Clemmons. Roll call, please.
Let's see, Clemmons, second. Okay. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Well, there you go, folks.
Thank you.
You'll be notified by staff when you can come before the village board with your request, and thanks for coming, and it was a good presentation, and we wish you all the best. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. And I try not to rush you, Wally, I understand you.
It's okay.
There's a lot of, you're doing a lot of penmanship there behind the scenes. Next item would be PCC 152-2021, a request from the village of Westmont regarding the following. A text amendment to Section 4.05, Paragraph E, permitted accessory structures and uses in yards of the zoning ordinance regarding public utility buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll give a quick lead-in, so we have two cases tonight that are basically precluded with a text amendment. And really, in both these cases, as we, the village was approached with a request, and our code couldn't accommodate. And so in both these cases, staff did extensive research as to what the best methodology was in terms of moving forward, and text amendments in these cases were both, the way that staff felt it was the best way to not only accommodate the request, but accommodate future requests if necessary, it's really there were deficiencies in our code. So both of these are very similar to that. So what I'll do is I'll do the lead-in with this, and then it'll segue into the next case, which is what the basis of this request starts from. So the first is to amend Section 4.05E. So Section 4.05E is basically an accessory structure table. So that's the table in our zoning code that defines where you can have a garage, or a shed, or a fence, and some other, there's a plethora of items you can have in your yard, from arbors and trellises to kids' equipment and such. And basically, we define there where it can exist on your lot. So usually, we classify it in three places. Can it be in your front yard? Can it be in your side yard? Or can it be in your rear yard? So for example, garages can only be in side and rear yards, they can't be in a front yard. So when we were approached with this request, and this request was very specific, so AT&amp;T is at 200 West 63rd, it's been there for quite some time. The property actually goes all the way up to 61st, and there's an office building or a training center on 61st. And there's kind of a pole farm and outdoor storage that's in between the two uses. And AT&amp;T approached the village and said, you know, we need to build a utility building. And it's all precursor to wanting to eventually vacate some of those buildings, and these pieces of equipment exist in some of those buildings. And these are, and they can correct me, but my understanding is there's some sort of air dryers that service the lines in the area. And staff said, well, we have allotments for a utility building when it is the primary building on a property. But this was unique in that they said, well, no, we're looking for a very small utility structure that will be in an easement, and eventually we won't own the property, it will be in an easement. So it's very similar to some of the pump stations that sometimes you see around, sometimes those are in easements, sometimes they're on standalone properties. But basically, staff said, well, we can't accommodate the request, because right now, the only accessory structures, accessory buildings we allow are sheds and garages, and those are in residential properties. We've always historically told commercial properties, no, when they ask for a storage shed or a garage, and there is a clear intent there, is we would rather a commercial property add on to their building rather than add a bunch of little buildings to accommodate their business. We'd rather them do it the correct way, which means investment in the property and actually an expansion of the building. So in this case, staff looked at the best way to figure out how to accommodate such a request, and we figured that the best place was in the accessory use table. And the accessory use table does give us a little bit of liberty in basically defining not just can it be in a side rear or front yard, but also parameters. So if you read through that, one good example is we have antennas that are listed there, and it says antennas can't be over 60 feet high. So in that description of an antenna, we've actually given a parameter that it has to abide by. So in this case, we set some parameters. So a size of no more than 250 square feet, a height of no more than 12 feet. We said it could not be in a front yard setback. We gave allowances for a side and a rear yard setback, as long as it was no closer than five feet. And what we were particular about, and you will see in the request tonight, is screening. So the request that you'll see tonight is along 63rd Street, and it is not in the front yard setback, and in this case, we have a supplemental setback because our important thoroughfares, we have the supplemental setback because we want to protect the views. It is not in that setback, it's 30 feet back. So it's in the standard buildable area for this lot. And then, per the amendment that we have here, we stated that it should be screened with landscape or a fence. A fence really isn't preferred when it's so close to the street. So in this case that you'll see tonight, they are proposing some landscape to hide the structure. And the reason that they're trying to put the structure so close to 63rd is there's some underlying utility vaults. So this was the smartest place to locate this. But what we're considering first is just a text amendment that allows utility buildings in easements, subject to these parameters, and I can also elaborate and answer questions as we move forward.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on this? Let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Scales, would you like to start?
I don't really have any questions as it relates to the text amendment. I mean, reading through the report made sense, so I can understand what we're looking at here.
Yeah. Commissioner Lavoy?
I only have one comment, and that is not related to this particular text amendment, but it seems like we see a lot of them. We see a lot of them come through, that when something comes up, we have to put a Band-Aid over this in our code, and a Band-Aid over this in our code, and a Band-Aid over this in our code. And I'm in favor of, now that we have Joe, of doing an upgrade on our code, and doing it all at once, you know, and doing it right. Our code needs it. I'm supportive of this, but our code needs to get upgraded across the board, in my opinion.
Thank you, and I wonder if our village attorney would like to address that comment?
Yeah, and that's a great point, and we've had those internal discussions for years, and we have a checklist of all the revisions we would like to make. As you know, Mr. Hennert Fein tackled the sign chapter several years ago. And I think the biggest obstacle to getting that done is time, because based on the staff that the village has, and the amount of work that that involves in trying to process everyone's applications so they get through timely, it's hard to do, and it may be more effective to do it chapter by chapter. I think that's, given the staff and my time and et cetera, that might be the best way to handle it. So we've talked about, for example, the plan development chapter needs completely rewritten. That's something we just need to tackle. It is hard for you guys to get things piecemeal, a definition here, a use there.
Right, right.
A section here, it'd be nice to rework everything. And last comment is, some communities will spend tens and tens of thousands of dollars to bring in professionals to look at a zoning ordinance and rewrite it, outside professionals, and sometimes the product is not much better than what you started with. So we can talk to the village manager about how to work on that.
Yeah, and I just think when you do it piecemeal, you subject yourself to, and we've seen this, where in one part of the code it says X, and in the other part of the code it says Y, and that's because we do text amendments like this. Like I said, I'm all in favor of this text amendment, because this one would probably be a text amendment no matter what. But I just thought I'd go out there and say, you know, that we really, really need to do something, because we're behind in times, and it needs to get updated. If we don't do it that way, what happens is we have a really key project, you know, when we've had them, that we end up getting variations, you know, 30 of them, because our code is incomplete and outdated.
I don't disagree one ounce, and I will elaborate when we're in the general comments at the end of the meeting, so.
Well, job security for you. Rachel Clemmons?
No, I think it's a good idea to address this. I'm in support of it.
Great.
Yeah, I support you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I think this is the most efficient way to legitimize the next item that's on the agenda, so I'm all for it.
Yeah, same here. I think where we're trying to get is to the next issue, so let's get there. Chair would stand, would accept a motion to approve the request from the village of Westmont, text amendment to Section 4.05, Paragraph E, permitted accessory structures and uses in yards of the zoning ordinance regarding public utility buildings. A motion to approve is written.
Motion to approve is written. Clemmons?
Second, Thomas.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. All right, that motion is approved, so next item is PCC 131-2020, request from EXP US Services Incorporated and AT&amp;T regarding the property at 200 West 63rd Street in Westmont for the following. A site and landscaping plan, approval for an accessory public utility building in the C1 Commercial Business District. Who would speak to this issue?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Scanlon, I'm the senior project manager for AT&amp;T Real Estate in Chicago area, and appreciate your time tonight. The, well, we're supposed to have overhead.
Jeff, can we turn the computer on? There you go.
There we go. As Mr. Hennert Fein has indicated, we have a parcel from 61st to 63rd Street. And 61st Street is actually a two-story structure, which has been a training center for us for many years. And on 63rd Street, we have a garage, which is primarily dispatch for a lot of the fiber-optic work we're doing, as well as storage, and some training apparatus between the two buildings, between 61st and 63rd Street. What we're proposing to do is to install a structure on 63rd Street. It's a utility structure, and as Mr. Hennert Fein had indicated, we have a number of cables, telephone cables underground running along 61st, through the west side of the property down to 63rd Street, and then they fan out from there. Basically, provides telephone service from our telephone exchange building in Downers Grove through the Westmont area. The, what AT&amp;T has been looking to do, particularly for about the last five to 10 years, is to reduce our real estate footprint across the country. AT&amp;T is one of the largest holders of real estate in the United States right now, and we're looking, been looking to reduce expenses and reduce property, and obviously, this has become a variable, a very valuable piece of property, especially along 63rd Street with the development that you all have approved. Eventually, we hope to sell the property, and in order to prepare ourselves to do that, we need to move some equipment. As Mr. Hennert Fein said, it's air dryer equipment, it's currently housed in the training facility on 61st Street. It's basically dehumidifying equipment. It dehumidifies air and pumps it into the cables to keep moisture from getting into the telephone cables and shorting them out.
Those air dryers are currently located in?
In the training facility. Yes, sir. Back this up here. As you can see, here's a partial site plan along 63rd Street. We do have currently some small structures that are mostly underground, they're called CEVs, Controlled Environment Vaults, in which the cables, some of the cables come in. What we're looking to do is add a utility structure, about 10 by 20, 12 by 20 foot, which is within the text amendment that Mr. Hennert Fein had discussed. The air dryer equipment, it'll basically be a conditioned environment for the air dryer equipment, that we will eventually relocate out of the training facility. The design attempt, what we tried to do, my architects at EXP looked at all the current structures along 63rd Street, Mariano's, Ellie Fitness, and we're coming up with a, and there's an artist's rendering of what we're proposing to do. The structure would be, as Mr. Hennert Fein indicated, 30 feet off of 63rd Street. We would have the structure, which would be a precast, but it would be made to look like a brown brick type enclosure. All the equipment serving it, the air conditioner, would be on the north side, which would be hidden from 63rd Street, and we would disguise or hide the structure with some plantings. And we've chosen, my architect has chosen, plantings that would be year-round screening. After they're established within two years, they'll be self-sustaining. While they're growing, we actually, we have a property management company that currently serves this, for this property, and we continue to do so while that vegetation was establishing itself. See if I can pull up a picture of what this looks like a little better. No, I don't have it now. it now. That's if, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have regarding the intent or what we're proposing to build here. Yes, sir?
You said that you're looking in the future to sell the property, or at least make your imprint smaller nationwide, or whatever.
Right, right.
So whoever buys this property from you, you have them understand that this building stays?
That's correct. We would have, and because of the existing structures, as well as the underground cabling, we would have an easement. The easement would basically be from 63rd to 61st Street, primarily along the west side of the parcel, and it would contain the existing structures, the underground structures on 63rd Street, as well as a new structure. That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Staff comments, please?
I don't have a lot to add, so basically, what AT&amp;T has done is they have accommodated the code that we felt was appropriate. So like I said, 63rd is a supplemental setback because it's one of our main thoroughfares, so they have to meet that 30-foot setback. Because it can be seen from 63rd, we asked for screening, which they have provided. You will note, though, in the plans, there's still a lot of underground lines, you know, so I would love to ask for more, but then it starts getting into the lines that are underneath the ground. So they did accommodate, they came forward with a plan. I asked them to improve it, and they did improve it based on my request. It does, even though it's precast, precast has come a long way, it does match a lot of the new buildings that have gone up at Market Center, which we appreciate that they're trying to do that. And then the last little piece I wanted to add was, this is, this property is zone C1, which is commercial, which is what Market Center is zoned. So as it stands, this property was probably annexed in after it was built. It was, it's never been a conforming use. It's always been non-conforming. So I think that the effort to basically free up the property for a C1 use to eventually move in there meets the intent of the comprehensive plan and the overall development of this area. As always, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Commissioners, Commissioner Lavoy, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. Does this, we'll call it a hut, I guess.
Utility hut.
Where is it going to receive its power from?
That's a great question. One of the reasons we chose the location along 63rd Street was not only because it's conducive with our underground telephone cabling, but that would be the optimal spot for us to pick up a Commwell-Edison feeder, as those existing underground structures are already being fed from the power along 63rd Street.
So this, the power source would be independent of any future development?
That's correct.
On the property? So it wouldn't be requirement of the new developer to provide power to it?
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, would there be backup power required?
There will be no.
Could there be a generator associated with the hut, any kind of exterior?
No onsite generator. Should there be a power failure, we would have a capability of bringing in a portable, but we've investigated the stability of the Commwell-Edison feeders along 63rd Street, and they're very reliable.
Okay. And I'm assuming that that building would meet our building code requirements, correct?
Correct. It would have to, in this case, because it's such a unique building, basically, we'd ask for their engineering audit, and then we'd pass it on to our reviewers to make sure that everything was compliant.
Okay. Is there a maintenance agreement that's associated with the hut itself that AT&amp;T would maintain it?
At this point, this is a private building on a property that is owned by the ones that will have the utility hut. So at this point, there is no requirement for that. What we have advised AT&amp;T is that although the village does not actually approve a plat of easement through this venue or through the board, we've advised that we should be included in that to make sure that the language that they put on there is appropriate, because our fears are is that these trees and bushes die, and then who do we hold accountable? We always hold property owner accountable, so we would always be able to hold the property owner accountable. But then we'd probably go back to that easement. So if the property owner said, no, AT&amp;T was supposed to maintain this, it would be that plat of easement that would define that. Or, based on their, the way they sell the property, they may say, well, no, you maintain this, and we just only want to come and maintain our own equipment. So basically, we've asked AT&amp;T to keep us involved, so that we can look at that language and make sure it's appropriate. The worst-case scenario is, is that we hold whoever buys the property responsible, and then we have an approved site and landscape plan that we hold them to.
Okay. Is there any exterior lighting on the building? I didn't see any elevation.
Exterior, I believe we probably have a fixture over the entrance door, which would be, I believe it's on the north side of the building, so.
So there wouldn't be anything on the south facing the runaway lighting glare, so the lighting would meet the code requirements as well?
We'd ask for those specs when it came in for permit.
Okay. Is the building sprinkled, or not?
No.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
Just a couple of quick questions, and thanks for the presentation, by the way.
Welcome.
So we're approving the site and landscape plan, correct? And that also includes this proposed easement that's running on the site plan I'm looking at. Is that correct?
No.
Or is that already existing?
There is not the easement yet. What AT&amp;T has done is they wanted to illustrate that this was what they felt that the easement, when they establish the easement before they sell the property, will look like.
That's correct.
And you'll notice that it's a bit awkward. It's kind of like a big square by 63rd, and then a little bit further than halfway down that site, there's some other structures that they're trying to encompass. It is a very unique easement, that is unique because AT&amp;T has existed on that property for, I don't know how long, but quite some time.
Fifty years.
And I think probably they never felt that they were going to abandon it. Probably it was one of those properties they felt they would always be in control of.
And would it be considered a public utility easement, or a privately-owned easement?
At this point, it is a, they will most, and correct me if I'm wrong, they will have to define it as a public utility easement reserved for AT&amp;T, but the creation of the easement is being done on private property, which they have their rights to do. Did I misstate that, or is that fairly accurate?
And therefore, it would be undevelopable land anyway, going forward.
Now, what I don't know is, I don't know if they're right, the easement so that other utilities can get in there as well. I would assume you probably don't want other utilities run through there.
And then, I guess this is a silly question, but that's a permanent structure that's going to be there so long as we have landlines, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I think that Commissioner Lavoy and Commissioner Scales have pretty much covered any concerns that might have.
Good job, gentlemen.
I have no further question.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'm good.
Commissioner Clemmons?
The only question, like with the Arbor-Videe and stuff like that, it seems, I'm just concerned about the sightlines, though, for pulling out from AT&amp;T and UPS. If it's going to, for people pulling out onto the 63rd Street, that was my only concern.
Say that again.
Okay, because you have the trees, and then you've got AT&amp;T for pulling out. For the distance, will cars, the trucks and vehicles pulling out be able to see around the Arbor-Videe, et cetera?
I'll try to answer that. So in terms of what our code requires, we have what we call corner vision triangles, and basically, we say in those areas is where we don't want it to be blocked. Our code only addresses when it's an intersection of streets.
Okay.
Not so much for private property. So I'll give you a quick example. The new medical office building that's up on Ogden, their ground sign, which is big, is practically right by their entrance. And I think the general assumption is, is that when you're going to leave those properties, really, you just need to inch up to where the street is, and you can see. It's not like an intersection where you're moving through it, and you need to see if someone's approaching and not stopping.
Okay. All right, then I withdraw that. Thank you.
So the width of the easement varies. It's not a rectangle that runs the length of the property.
Correct. We tried to minimize it, obviously, to make as much of the existing property available for future development. So we tried to minimize it exactly where the cables were and where the existing underground structures were.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's see what people think. Chair would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Village Board of Trustees, PCC 131-2020, a site and landscaping plan approval for an accessory public utility building in the C1 Commercial Business District.
So move, Van Buren?
I'll second Lavoy.
Discussion on the item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Well, there you have it, folks. Stay in touch with Mr. Hennert Fine, and he'll keep you notified when you go before the village board. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have your flash drive? Did you get your flash drive?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. Good night. Next item is PCC 151-2021, request from the Village of Westmont regarding the following: text amendment to Article 14, Paragraph B, definitions of the zoning ordinance to create a definition of bowling alleys. And for this, Mr. Hennert Fine, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully, you don't think this is very silly.
No, no.
But the request that comes after this is for a few special uses. That's Suburbanite Bowling, which has been in existence over 60 years, at this location and predates the codes that we have. They were approaching us for some requests for special uses, and we kind of looked at what the code allows there, and according to our current code right now in the B2 district, which is where they're located, bowling alleys should have a special use approval. So any new bowling alley would need to come through this process and get a special use approval. Suburbanite predates that, so we would consider that a legal non-conforming use. And for those that don't understand what that is, basically, it means we're okay with that use, but there are expirations that are written in the code. And one of the most common ones is if it was destroyed more than 50%, then the village has the right to not let it get rebuilt until they got a special use. So this never becomes an issue until someone tries to refinance it or tries to insure it, and then the village gets calls, and the bank will say, well, can that be rebuilt? And in this case, if we were approached, we'd have to say, well, only if less than half of it was destroyed. Now, this is unique to this business. We see this a lot on single-family homes, where it stops the process, because a bank won't finance something that's non-conforming. But really, that kind of gave the impetus to say, well, maybe this is our opportunity to ask Suburbanite to basically secure this as legal. It's to their benefit. And then we went and looked at the definitions, and there was no definition for a bowling alley. Now, we have lots of things that we don't have definitions for, and sometimes that's okay. But one of the requests that was being asked of us, which is subsequently withdrawn, and we'll get to that in a second, was they had a restaurant user, a tenant that they were leasing the restaurant out to, that had an outdoor activity, and in this case, an outdoor activity was a smoker for a barbecue. And when you read our code, there are very few business-related items that are allowed to exist outside. In fact, our code basically says all business activities should be inside. And then it gives a few exceptions, such as open sales lots and some other things that can be had. There was no exception for this outdoor activity that they were doing. And in initial discussions, they talked about maybe an outdoor patio, or outdoor sales sometimes, or, you know, other activities that could happen outdoors. So staff worked with the applicant and said, well, we need to create a definition, and let's make sure that definition addresses all the uses that you have there. So when you read this definition, you'll see it says restaurant and bar, and billiards, and certain things that happen there. You'll see a new trend with a lot of the bowling alleys is the outdoor bocce ball. We could see a relevant need to adopt this definition so that they could make their request. So what this is before you is simply creating a definition of what a bowling alley is. Yes, we only have one in town. No, we don't have a request for another one. This is to secure the uses that exist there. And then we'll talk more about the special uses with the next case, and I'm always available for questions.
Okay. Thank you.
And actually, Mr. Chair, let me quickly go over what that text says, because I forgot one important thing. Is on your desk tonight, we did make a revision based on our talks with John Zemanek, so I'll go over that briefly, because it is a little bit different. So basically, our definition, and for the public here, is a bowling alley is an establishment that devotes more than 50% of its gross floor area to bowling lanes, equipment-related bowling areas with customary accessory uses such as arcades, billiards, snack bars, restaurant and bar. And this is what we changed a little bit. We said limited outdoor activities may be allowed if approved as part of the bowling alley's special use approval. And the reason we changed that language a little bit is, right now, they're, by definition, they're allowed to have, let's say it's a restaurant. If we didn't make this specific request on the limited outdoor activities to be tied to the special use, then they could just ask to install something outside without ever coming back through this commission. We wanted to make sure, because outdoor activities can sometimes be something we want to discuss, we just wanted to make sure that if they have outdoor activities, that they come back through this venue to let us know what they want to do, and we can actually approve it. So that was the little bit of tweaking of the language since you got your staff reports.
All right. Anyone from the public to comment on this? Seeing none, we'll go to the commissioners.
She's coming. She's coming up.
Good evening. My name is Linda Herbeck, and I am here with my partners Judy Anderson and Ed Herbeck, representing Suburbanite Ball. We are part of the ownership of our family business. Suburbanite has been part of the community for the past 65 years. Our parents built the center back in 1957, back when Washington Street was a gravel road and Ogden and Cass was a four-way stop. So now, here we are today, 2021, required by the village, because of these special uses that we've been requesting, to establish our business as a legal conforming business under the new codes that did not exist back in 1957, when our bowling center was established. At this time, we are also withdrawing the request for Nuka Barbecue. Thank you for your help in getting us through this process of paperwork.
Certainly. Now, Joe, it's my understanding, we'll, we're still doing this.
Yes, I think first you have to entertain the text amendment.
Yes.
And then what Linda was, she was discussing some of the next steps, which I will also discuss as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So let's go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Clemmons?
Yeah, and I think it makes sense. It's logical to have the text, and I do appreciate the last line that was added, that limited outdoor activities may be allowed if approved, because I was concerned about the residential area by them. So, you know, depending on what's going to be going on. So I think it makes sense.
Commissioner Thomas?
I also agree. I'm fine.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I do too.
No comments.
And Chris?
My only question is for our village attorney. Do you have a problem with the word "limited" in the last statement? It's kind of a broad stroke, you know?
Yeah, you know, I know Joe and I went over this several times, how to best word that, and we didn't want to say that all, you know.
I get it.
It's been one way. And we didn't want to say that all, you know, it's bad one way or the other.
Yeah.
And...
You're okay with it, though, right?
I'm fine with it.
All right, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. I am, too. And I understand the approach. Get this, so that we can get into these special requests from Suburbanite Bowl. So unless there's further discussion, I would entertain a recommendation to approve this text amendment.
So move. Scales?
Second. Thomas?
Scales. Thomas?
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. So the motion is approved as written, and we'll proceed to PCC 094-2121, a request from Suburbanite Bowl Incorporated regarding the property located at 201 West Ogden in Westmont for the following: A, a special use permit request to operate a bowling alley in the B2 General Business District. And second, a special use permit to request to operate a seasonal outdoor sales lot for Clover's Garden Center. The second permit request was withdrawn, so we're just addressing those two.
And Mr. Chair, if you want to start with me, because I think that Linda already discussed the bowling alley. And I know that she does have Clover's represented, but I'll quickly do my piece, and then I know that Jim from Clover's can do his piece.
All right, thank you.
So we've already discussed the text amendment. So the first request is basically at the staff request to say, let's legalize or make this legal conforming. So that is the first request. So in your packets, you do have hours of operation, the typical things we'd ask for a new business. There's historically been no issues with this use on the property. So I don't foresee that the, this is not a standard special use where you can't anticipate what the new business will be doing. We already know what the business has been doing for some time. So that's the first request, is to establish the special use for the bowling alley. As it was stated, the second request, which was the outdoor activities for this barbecue smoker, that has been withdrawn because the business itself has not moved forward. The third request is for Clover's Garden Center. So for those that have been on this commission for any length of time, you know, since 1999, Clover's has received approvals for an open sales lot. And it's actually a separate lot that's to the west of the bowling center, but it's under the control of these owners. Basically, to use that lot two to three times a year for seasonal sales. In the spring, it's your typical spring sales. In the fall, it's your pumpkins and such. He used to do trees, but that's not part of the request anymore. But basically, he sets up for several months out of the year. He fences the area in. He has a few tent structures, so there's some shade. And then he utilizes the bowling alley for restrooms and such for the employees that are there. The one piece that's different is we felt it was unfair that every three or five years when this approval would expire, we would make Jim rush in here. Usually, it was in the spring when he already had his plants ready to go, because everyone forgot that it expired. So the one piece of this that staff has kind of advised was, let's make this so it renews annually, but we need to have a mechanism just in case anything ever goes wrong. So if one year something happens that really is upsetting, you know, that it goes outside of the boundaries of where it should be, or it's moved, or the signage is way more than we would accept, it gives the board the ability to say, no, come back in and see us, and we need to reassess and reapprove at that point. But it means that in perpetuity, as long as he has a relationship with the property owners, it just renews annually. So he doesn't need to come back into us again. So just be advised that your recommendation and the board approval basically would not require them to keep coming back to us like we had in the past.
Vote on them all separately.
Less bureaucracy. I love it.
And if you want to invite Jim to represent Clover's up to fill in anything I didn't speak up, so...
Certainly. Mr. Coonley?
How are you? I'm Jim from Clover's Garden Center. Thank you, commissioners, for having us here again tonight. So we have been, since 1999, that's what it was.
That's when I found your first approval.
I think it may have even been before that, because, what, I'm 30 now, so that was 20 years. I'm kidding. I wish. But we very much appreciate your having us back every year to Suburbanite Bowl. We have a wonderful working relationship with the folks at Suburbanite. They're just terrific people. And we are feeling every year so welcomed by the community of Westmont and surrounding area. And it's just, it's fantastic. It's such a good feeling to be out there in the spring, and we're done with the miserable winter, and everyone comes in, and we see familiar faces and kids that have grown up, and it's just wonderful. So we would very much appreciate continuing this time of good spirits and growth and all that fun stuff that plants and pumpkins and things like that bring. So, and I wouldn't mind the renewal, the auto renewal. That would be nice. Not that we don't love to come and see you all. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have nothing to add, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I see no one from the public. Let's go to the commissioners. And Allison, you want to begin?
No, I think it makes sense. It's led, you know, with a good partnership, and definitely both businesses are an asset to the community, so I think it makes sense.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, like you say, he's been there year after year after year after year. We know what to expect. We know that it works. Both companies have proven that it works, and I have no problem with it.
Wally?
No problem with it.
No same.
Glad to have him here.
You bet.
I have no comments except to say congrats on being in business for so long. I think that's great, so glad you're here.
Chris?
Yes, I would echo those comments. Really appreciate both entities there. We frequent both of them, and I'm just glad to have them in Westmont.
Yeah, well, I know Wally, every month he brags to me about how good a bowler he is and his scores and how he...
Not so much.
No? And my wife and I both love Clover's and have gone for many years, so it's a great business there. And with that, Chair would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Village Board of Trustees, this request from Suburbanite Bowl. For one, a special use permit request to operate a bowling alley in the B2 General Business District. We'll vote on these separately, correct, Joe?
Yes.
So for a special use permit to request a bowling alley in the B2 General Business District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Clemmons?
Second. Scales?
A motion to approve and a second discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And second, a special use permit request to operate a seasonal outdoor sales lot for Clover's Garden Center. Motion?
So move. Thomas?
Second. Clemmons?
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. And Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Do I get to vote?
Oh, Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, folks, thanks for coming in, and thanks for getting all this work done. I know Joe and John have done a lot of work on it, and you have, too, and appreciate your business and your presence, and good luck in the future. The next issue is Planning and Zoning Commission 107-2021, a request from Jason Han and Danielle and Gerald Smits regarding the property at 538 65th Street in Willowbrook for the following: First, a map amendment to request to rezone from R1 Single Family Detached Residence District to R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. Secondly, a preliminary plot of subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. And who would speak to this issue? Good evening. Good, all of the above.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Jun Kwang-Lin. I'm the project engineer and the surveyor on this project, and I have owners here with me. The subject property is 538 65th Street in Westmont, and the property, the area of the property is 1.05 acres. Currently, the property is occupied by a single-family house that's really under disrepair condition. So we're here by requesting the rezoning of the property from R1 to R3 while subdividing, while demolishing this existing building and subdividing this lot from one lot to two lots. As stated in the staff report, the comprehensive plans identify this area of the village as a single-family detached, which is what we intended to do. Furthermore, the subject property is adjacent to the neighboring property, which are zone R3, which is what we're trying to zone to, on the east side, on the north side, and on the south side, with the exception of the three lots immediately to the west side of the property. But these three neighbors to the west are currently zoned under R1A. But these three lots are facing Ridge Road to the west, as opposed to facing south towards 65th Street. Not to mention the fact that, according to the staff report, these three lots are not meeting the bulk standard under R1A. So upon this property is subdivided, the resulting two lots will be in a similar, if not identical, lot width and lot area to the majority of the east neighbors to us within the same street block. From a site design standpoint, we propose to have a detention basin running in the backyard of these two properties following the existing topography. This detention basin is going to be a dry bottom detention basin, planted with the native landscaping to address best management practice per DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance. We also, we do have sewer and water mains currently on 65th Street available for these two new houses to be tied in. So we shouldn't have a problem for the utility availability there. We are, meanwhile, we're proposing to run, to install the new concrete walk, public concrete walk, along the entire frontage of the property, along with parkway trees to improve this right of way within 65th Street. We are, upon discussing with village engineer Patterson, we're not going to propose a curb and gutter along the north edge of the 65th Street pavement due to the drainage pattern that's currently going on. That's not supposed to be disturbed and altered. So, yeah, that was, again, that was agreed upon with the village engineer. Project-wise, we have gone pretty far from, you know, with the review by village engineer and the village forester, Jaeger. So we don't have any objection with only few remaining comments by the engineer and reviewer. Now, I'd like to bring the owners to briefly talk about their vision and plan on these two properties.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, commissioners. A pleasure to be in front of you. Thank you for entertaining our petition. My wife and I, my name is Jason Han, my wife Danielle, together with her uncle Jerry, or Gerald, full name, brought the property, and our intent is to have it rezoned to R3. We would build on our side, and after it's partitioned, the other side would belong to Danielle's uncle, and he would build a residence there. So that is the extent of our petition, and we're happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel like I'm a broken record from the last meeting, but so what's before us is a lot split in the Highview Estates area. Whenever someone is proposing a lot split and they need a rezoning, and the reason that they're requesting a rezoning is we always try to figure out what the best zoning is. We start with what it's currently zoned. And there's always a lot width requirement. There's also a lot size, but these are really deep lots, and lot size usually isn't the issue. So in this case, because of the, I think it's 156 is the width, which is kind of a standard-sized lot when these were developed, when they were in the county, it's a fairly standard thing that we see in this area that they ask to split it in two, which would do a 78-foot wide lot. And basically, to meet the requirements of the zoning code, the R3 zoning district is a 60-foot wide lot, and it tends to be one of the appropriate single-family districts. There are, there is a district that allows 75, but we always try to look at the surrounding properties, because we don't want a spot zoning situation. So in this case, we look around the property, on three sides of it, it's all zoned R3. On one side of it, it's zoned R1A, and all those homes face the other street. A little history on this area is for a long time when properties were annexed in this area, and there were several forced annexations, so not voluntary annexations. It always defaulted to an R1A. So that's why when you look at that zoning map, you see a lot of that pretty green of the R1A, and that's because basically, for a time period, that's what we required. Now, when properties get annexed, and they are annexed into R1 automatically, this property is zoned R1, so they're looking at the most appropriate zoning. Working with staff, we said that would be the R3, because that's what's on three sides of you. And usually, when you're matching the zoning, then you're matching the character of the neighborhood. So in this case, a lot split has all the general requirements that we have for a lot split. The first is Lynn mentioned, working with the forester, there are no established heritage trees. So I know we've discussed heritage trees before. There are none, because usually, when you draw a new lot line or you create a new buildable area, you want to see if a heritage tree is being affected, mostly to put the owner on notice that there might be a fee if you want to remove it, and that you need to adjust your design to try to save it. In this case, there are no heritage trees. Most of the trees that are on the site are not high-quality trees. There will be the standard requirements for stormwater detention, so he mentioned that there was a pond, a dry pond that's created on the back of the lot, which on these two lot splits is typically what happens. This is a little different than the lot split we had last month, where the pond ended up on one of the three lots, and so we had some concerns there about maintenance. In this case, the way we typically treat this is their standard language on the plat that basically says that these are stormwater detention easements, and what our rights are to maintain them, and what the owner's requirements are to maintain them. Basically, to make sure that we have the ability to fix a problem if any problem arises. And then, as he indicated, in this case, we'd be required the sidewalk to be installed, but at this point, we're not requiring the curbs and gutters, the street lights, and correct me if I'm wrong, typically, we take cash in lieu for those pieces, so that if and when the village ever does decide to install those, we've already got the money banked to do it. As always, I'm available for any questions.
All right, real fine. Thank you. Seeing no one in the public, we'll go right to the commissioners. And Commissioner Lavoy, you want to begin?
I had a lengthy conversation with the village engineer about this. A couple of things that jumped up at me, but it's been resolved. I don't really have any issues, but the way it's been presented, the release pipe actually encroaches the neighboring property, and it didn't really show very well there what...
You mean to the east?
Yeah. So the release pipe is actually on private property that doesn't, is not separate owner. So I think that our village engineer has addressed that issue, and there are some other issues related to the stormwater that, you know, are not really about this petition, but more of the bigger issue in the code about doing these regionally, and rather than having an inch and a quarter pipe draining rear yards that gets clogged all the time, and we don't have the ability to get back there. Well, that was the other concern that I have, is that the... Well, that was the other concern that I have, is that the building footprint, because of the setbacks, is it big enough for us, for Public Works, to get back there? Because you know that all these little ponds, it's not just mowing the grass, it's making sure that that structure functions correctly. Because they silt up, you know. The size of the pipe that's there, a piece of bark, mulch can clog that pipe. And when that pipe gets clogged, who's going to clean it? And it's really, you know, it's all water, and the homeowner wouldn't have wherewithal to figure that out and say, okay, what do I need to do? So I was concerned that we don't have the width there to get a piece of equipment back there if we need to. But the village engineer has assured me that we have the mechanism in place, and Public Works has looked at it, and they're okay with it. So my, all of my questions have been answered.
Well, thank you for that. That's an interesting point about the, makes you want, what I was asking. Larger pipes, resolve, that sort of thing, or...
No, it's a matter of the pipe, the release pipe. If you see, if you look at on the plan, it actually crosses the neighboring property, the corner of somebody else's lot. And it didn't show clearly that there was an easement there on the application. So the question that I raised was, you know, are we going to have somebody knocking at our door saying, why are you digging up my backyard? So it's been mitigated, it's been addressed. The only other thing, you know, if you notice on the plan, is that, I mean, the property from west to east drops, you know, seven feet in elevation. And, you know, I don't necessarily, I mean, doing a, trying to change that from ditch improvement to curb and gutter and change that drainage pattern just doesn't make sense, unless you do the whole street. So I'm not really in favor of even doing the sidewalk, because there's a sidewalk, and then there's no sidewalk. So I just don't want to have the expense, you know, put on a homeowner to do the sidewalk if it's a sidewalk to nowhere. But, you know, that's for the village staff to figure out. That's not what's in front of us tonight. So I'm okay with the petition. I'm okay with the subdivision, and I'm okay with the stormwater. I have no further comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
I don't really have any comments. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Welcome to Westmont. Commissioner Thomas? Again, you're welcome, and I'm in favor of it. And I say this all the time, I appreciate staff working with the people coming in, answering their questions, putting them at ease. And it wasn't always like that in Westmont. And I appreciate your work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
Yeah, I'm in favor. Welcome.
I guess I had, I would have one question for the staff or village attorney on the shared, with two suffered owners, two properties sharing a detention basin. How is that handled from a...
Many of the lot splits that you've seen come here before, basically, the way that the language reads on the plat that gets recorded is it says that the owner is responsible for the detention area on the back. So basically, each owner of the lot is responsible for their side of it. Now, it's not an ideal scenario, because if one, if the neighbor that has the pipe that's clogged, and they don't do anything about it, floods the other yard, then it's an issue between two neighbors. And if necessary, the village can intervene, because there is language on there that says the village can intervene.
But by having that language in the plat, it allows one property owner to make a claim against the other property owner for failing to maintain the detention area, including a clogged pipe. And so it can be resolved between the two of them. Worst-case scenario, the village should come in, clean out the area, and lean the properties for the cost thereof.
All right, thank you. Yeah, welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Unless there's further discussion, Chair would accept the motion to approve recommendations to the village board.
So moved. Scales?
Second, Clemmons?
Have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner, I mean Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Well, there's a lot of yes votes tonight. But there you have it. Congratulations, and I know you've put a lot of hard work in already on this. So Joe will notify you when...
Did you do both in one?
Oh, stand by. There's two that I just... We have to do, yeah, we have to vote on the second one, so...
Go run away.
That's all right. You could...
Thank you. And the second part, preliminary plot of subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District.
I'll so move Van Buren?
Second. Scales?
Motion and second discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes, and thank you for catching me on that. Now, folks, congratulations. Good night. Those are all the agenda items on miscellaneous. Our next meeting will be the second meeting, or the second Wednesday of December. That'd be the 8th of December. Does anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I just stopped to eat you on staffing, and since I deferred comments to Chairman Lavoy's... Oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear me. First, to address Chairman Lavoy's frustration with the text amendments. And you are correct that it is piecemealing a code. The better way to do it is comprehensively. And that's what we did with the signed text amendment several years ago. And in my new role, which, last time I was here before you, I was a temporary planner, because we had just recently lost the last planner. Since that time, I have been hired as the deputy director of community development. I will still be your liaison. We will hire another planner, but actually, I will be your liaison. So although, based on experience, you may see the other planner up here from time to time or on simpler projects, it's going to be a time to acclimate a new staff hire. So I will be the liaison. The intent was that this position handled the public hearing project. So basically, the project, there's still a little more head scratching that had to come in. That's my new role. One of the things I'm tasked with is text amendments. And part of the duties is trying to look at it comprehensively. So one of the first things I'll be doing is basically prioritizing which sections need the most work, and then whittling away over time on those comprehensive amendments, so...
Joe, there's an analogy that I could use to describe your position. And that is, in the Marine Corps, if you're in the Navy, if you know how to peel potatoes, you get a job for life. You know how to do text amendments. You did a great job on the sign ordinance. And hopefully, when you get some help, you're the guy to get this thing cleaned up, because we've been just flooded with these kinds of text amendments and piecemealing this thing going along. But there's, it seems like the text amendments that we have, that we've done over the past several months are just really the tip of the iceberg, really. I mean, there's bigger issues in the code. So we're getting that, the simple ones that affect particular applicants. But, you know, Joe is very good at doing this. He has demonstrated that, and I'm really glad to have him here. And, you know, his expertise is going to help us get where we need to go with our code.
I say amen to that. So glad to have you, Joe.
Yeah, I don't want to get a big head. Be careful on this one.
Already do. Too late.
Any other commissioner comments? Village Attorney? Then...
Joe's a big head.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.